I'd like to call this meeting of the Human Services Committee to order. Could we have a roll call, please? Chris?
Commissioner McConnell, Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitath.
Here.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Here. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or changes in the human service agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the portion of our agenda that's dedicated to a citizen comment. Are there any citizens in the room tonight that wish to address the Commission on Human Service Matters? Seeing none, are there any updates? Any conceptual initiatives?
None.
I don't see that we have any old business. We have community mental health board appointments, which I believe there are two. Are these for final action? These, I think the action tonight would be to send it on to the full board.
Okay.
I know one of the applicants here, Mike Smith, very well. I served with him on the Community College Foundation Board. I think he'd be a great addition. I was pleased to see he applied. The other gentleman, I'm not familiar with. So could, did you make the motion, Howard?
I'll make a motion, forward to the full board.
Are we moving both of them forward, or is it only one opening or two openings?
There's two applicants.
For one opening.
For two openings.
For two openings.
Oh, for two openings. And are these from districts, or are these at large? Both of them are at large.
Okay.
I would second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any other human service matters to come before the committee this evening? Hearing none, for information only, we have the St. Clair County Health Department, December 2017, points of interest to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
How about a motion to receive and file the packets?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adfirmant?
So moved.
Support. Luke, you're our Judiciary Public Safety Chair tonight.
I'm the assistant.
Okay.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting tonight, order? Sorry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell, Commissioner Tomlin.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitath.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Item two, additions, deletions, changes of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard tonight? One more time, citizens to be heard. Seeing none, updates from the commissioners? Seeing none, conceptual initiatives?
None.
On this evening. Nothing under old business, new business? Item seven A is the Ottawa County Juvenile Detention Center bed rental agreement.
Mr. Chair, I move that this agreement be sent on to the full board. Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, revised childcare budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we send this on to the full board.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, Macomb County Juvenile Detention Agreement.
I move that that be sent on to the full board.
Support.
All in favor?
I had one quick, before we go there. I told you I ran into the gal that runs that program at the state of the county this year. Had a lot of good things to say about the relationship with Macomb, St. Clair, so on and so forth. So it was good to hear that. That's it.
And it appears they're just a minor increase in the cost. Three dollars.
That's been an interesting change. Remember when we first built that thing? I mean, tons of kids were involved in that program, stuff like that, and statewide that those numbers have declined, and you know, there's some alternative things that they use for now, and so.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Item D, contract approval request with Westlaw, Thompson, and Reuters.
Chair, I move approval, I move that this request be forwarded to the full board. Second.
Questions? Did we vote on C?
If you just go back, we jumped the gun.
Yeah, all right. Go back now, or finish D?
We'll do C. Just ask for all in favor on C. I'm sorry.
I had a motion by Commissioner Tomlin.
Item C, seconded by Commissioner Greitath.
Greitath. All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, now a contract approval request with Westlaw, Thompson, and Reuters. I believe we had a motion and support.
We did.
Are there questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And item E, the sheriff contract for police services with the Charter Township of China.
I move that that contract be forwarded to the full board. Second.
Any questions on any?
Just a comment, I guess. I guess China was questioning the increases, but they worked out the differences, and they're happy with the contract, and they approved it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other judiciary public safety matters? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention that with the high water and the ice and stuff the way it is right now, there's some serious issues, and a lot of blockage down in the Elginak area. The ice is jammed up solid, it's beginning to push itself up to the top of the seawalls. There are some homes in the St. Clair area, East China Township area, that are beginning to flood a little bit. So just kind of be aware of that. They're down there with the cutters trying to break some of that stuff up, but every time they do that, it disrupts the ferry service then to Harson's Island. They closed that thing down the other night for about three hours, got the ice frozen, then broke their path, and then, of course, the ice stays in position, and they can run that ferry back and forth. Every time the cutter goes through there, they break it up, then you get the bracken ice coming in, and it just causes all kinds of problems. So they're watching it closely. And then the other thing I wanted to mention with the summer high water that we're having right now, there's a lot of issues with water erosion, property losses, things of that nature. And January 11th, at six o'clock, and I don't know the location, but I can get it for anybody that wants it, they're going to have, the DNR is having a hearing in Elginak, it's a public hearing, on whether they should take the Elginak stretch from the Harbor Club around to the boat ramp and make that a complete no-wake zone. Currently, it's under the 200, 600-foot rule. It's wide enough in that river that you can run down the middle, but you've got to be dead center in the middle. So it's causing a lot of problems, a lot of issues. I had a meeting today with a couple of people about it. We're going to follow up with the Marine Patrol and get a little more information about it, so when summer done, does roll around, and we still have the high water, we're going to be able to take care of these people that are having some issues down there with the wake action, so.
Actually, Sunday afternoon, I had a little cabin fever, so we took a ride down there and seen the ice. I was quite amazed, this early in the year, how much ice there really is down.
It's pushing over the seawalls today. I mean, it's really getting high. That stretch along Marine City, just north of Marine City, it's actually right up over on top of the wall and laying on the grass now from the ice floes and stuff. And of course, every time, every time the cutters go by, they go by at 12, 15 miles an hour, freighters going through at eight or nine. And I was out there today, and the freighter, the cutter went by, then the freighter went by, and I was taking a video of it, and you can hear on my video the ice all cracking where I was standing from that thing going by out there about, you know, 400 or 500 yards out there. It was just because that it moves so much water, and you could hear, oh, I'm getting off this ice.
Could I hear that again? What was the sound? Thank you.
You were standing on the ice?
Well, on a separate issue, similar story, Lake Simcoe, last weekend up there ice fishing, and but between the islands, they make a highway with cars, the ferry quit running there, so it'd be similar to Harson's Island. We're out there ice fishing, the cars are going by, and you can hear that ice, the ice is a foot thick where we were ice fishing. And we can hear it cracking, and it's moving, and the water's coming up in our fishing hole, and the ice was quite thick there, but just the cars driving by, and they're driving by about, oh, 50 to 100 feet from us, like a highway going from the island to the mainland.
Mr. Greitath, when did we go on that ice breaking?
About four years ago.
Was it four years ago?
Yeah. Yep, I still have the pictures. I'll send them to you again. Yeah, it was a good time. I just talked to a city manager who went out on that same boat at a different time than we did. Absolutely loved it, still talks about it all the time.
It was a very interesting trip.
This is early, though, for ice. I live in East China on the water, and I talked to Greitath today, and I'm like, man, you know, ice is just coming down like crazy. And to his point, that stretch, Marine City, right by, like, where the rigada, and that was arguably where we had the most damage three or four years ago. I happen to drive, you know, the water every day, twice a day, for the business, and that's, that area is, it gets bad there. It took everybody's dock out.
Yeah, there's docks getting ready to go right now in that same area, so yeah, just kind of be aware of it and see where it goes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other judiciary public safety matters? Seeing none, information only, I see nothing.
I move we receive and file packets. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee meeting to order. Anna Clark, would you take the role?
Commissioner McConnell, Commissioner Tomlin.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitath.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental public works matters? Seeing none. Any updates from commissioners other than Happy New Year? None. Any conceptual initiatives for administration? None. Any, no old business, new business? A professional services contract for Parks Capital Projects. Mark's here to discuss those with us.
Good evening. We have two projects completed by Memorial Day weekend, so it's a very tough timeline, so we pushed on our pre-qualified professional service firms to give us a reply to our request for proposals to provide professional services for the Goodos building a new pavilion out at Goodos County Park, and for constructing an overflow parking area at Fort Grashit County Park. You should have the bid tabulations at your spot. We had five of the pre-qualified firms participate and received four proposals for each of those projects. I really didn't expect architectural firms to be bidding on road projects and vice versa, but they did, and so they're tabulated there for you. Under the Goodos Pavilion, we asked them to give us two prices. One is if they design a building that would be stick-built onsite, or two, work with us to specify a pre-engineered building from a national vendor, and then separately bid for a local contractor to assemble the kits. In the case of Goodos County Park, the two traditional pavilions out there, the Pine River Pavilion and the Garden Pavilion, both are kits. They are tongue-in-groove deck over laminated beams, and then traditional roofing on top. So again, we received four proposals, and Pam Blau, our landscape architect, who would not have designed a building as a stick-built building, but could specify and work with us to buy a kit building, in which case the seals, the professional seals, come from the company that provides the kit, so there's no need for her to design the building. So in each case, they bid both ways, except for Pam, who bid just the kit. And Pam is the, was low bidder on that. Do you have any questions on the Goodos Pavilion, before I move to the second one?
Just a question, that's going to go, oh, I'm sorry. Bill, you had first shot.
Mark, the, I'm looking at these bids, and I'm noticing a couple of notes below a couple of them, like, for example, PB or PMB does not include survey, layout, electrical, and testing. Is that stuff that needs to be added in then, and what does that do to the cost?
No, not really. In that, both of these projects are putting facilities between existing walkways or roads, and so it's just connect dots. So there's pretty minimal topographical considerations.
So project control includes topo and site layout?
Yeah.
Is that something that they did or did not have to do?
They were proposing to bid to do probably more work than we really needed.
Than what you really needed.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
In the case of the Goodos Pavilion, we actually built a gravel and limestone pad and operated a canopy there as a rental facility to confirm whether it would be popular. It was extremely popular, so we would be going back and building that pavilion right on that pad, or supplementing the pad a little bit, so. So we know that it drains well, you know, all the slopes are right, so a lot of that work doesn't need to be done. Pam also has the insight of knowing the capability, our park operations supervisor, used to be a construction inspector for BMJ, and she's worked with him a lot, knows what's, what we need or don't need, so she was, she's providing a bare bones proposal that I think will easily cover our needs.
Commissioner Rushing.
What does QBS stand for?
Qualification Based Selection.
I'm sorry, what?
Qualifications Based Selection. That was the process we went through a couple of years ago.
Okay.
In which we designated, and Carl participated, we designated five firms from each of the disciplines, and these are all, so all those firms were invited to submit proposals.
Commissioner Greitath.
Commissioner Rushing is not done. She just informed me.
Okay.
I've got two questions. On the one, Goodos County Park Pavilion Construction, $200,000, the total price of this, everything included. Okay. And then on the Fort Grashit County Park Overflow Parking, the $50,000 is just for the professional fees and services, not the project, not the total cost.
That was expected to be the full project. Now, the first step in this contract with the professional is to fully, that's, you know, coming from an administrator's guesstimate of cost, they will crunch the numbers and confirm the park and you whether those numbers are real.
Do you have a full, estimated full project cost?
No, that's, will be the first thing the design professional does.
Okay, Commissioner Greitath.
You done, sir?
Yes.
On the, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but on Fort Grashit's scope of work, you've got BMJ Engineering. I know they're not part of your QBS program. Is that because they did this some time ago, and you're just going back and using what they had already done?
Right, you know, all the firms were told that they could, we would ask and get the stuff that we had already paid for, the topo survey would be transmitted to them. So that was a starting point for all the design teams.
Okay. Good enough, thank you.
And that's been, that's worked out very well. BMJ's been very cooperative. We've kind of worked there, and in the case of surveying, depending on where the property and what local surveyor had experience on the property, we've been going with that surveying company, rather than having another surveyor come, come in and reinvent the wheel. In the case of the beach repairs, BMJ provided data to project control engineering to go from there.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other commissioners with questions? My question was answered, and that's where putting the pavilion at Goodos over where the 10th Pavilion was.
Right, right.
And the 10th Pavilion, we will, what will we do with that, the 40 by 40?
The canopy, we used there last year. We plan to move out to Fort Grashit and do the same thing, establish a temporary rental location, and see if it works right, people like it, and then come back to you in succeeding years to possibly build a permanent structure at that site.
Fort Grashit has really been very popular.
Yes, the pavilions are booked really early and completely for the year, very early each year.
You have two pavilions at?
Two pavilions at Fort Grashit.
Fort Grashit.
Existing.
Thank you.
And then the 10th Pavilion will be a third option. Commissioner Rushing.
Different issue, but how soon before we get the budget or the business plans for all the county parks?
We're working on that. We lost the digital copies in the O Drive, and we have found them, and now we're going through and updating them. We were in a panic for a while, we couldn't find any of our digital copies for that.
Any other questions from commissioners? Thank, Mark, you had another comment?
And on Fort Grashit, the overflow is just to run a strip of asphalt through an area that our staff cleared last year, and we used, but it would be a strip of asphalt to provide safe access in and out of that area. So, and there's an asterisk from PMB landscape architects on both points. They were low bids on each of them individually, then offered a $300 discount if they got the both. So my recommendation is to award PM Blau both contracts for a combined fee of $8,800.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
Final action? Just for final action?
Could be, it's under your $10,000. I mean, we're pushing the timelines on this pretty aggressively, so.
I would entertain a motion to make that for final action.
We have to get a motion for the first thing here, right? If you're going to do, or you're going to do it.
Do it, all as one.
Do it, all as one. I'll make a motion for this for final action tonight on all items.
Any other discussion?
Just one, a comment. Coming across the bridge, I see whoever decorated the lighthouse, that really stuck out. It was, it really stuck out. Real nice job.
Port Huron Museum does a really nice job. We don't, we don't, that's one project we don't get to do.
It really stuck out.
The museum staff does a great job on that, and every year they tweak it, the insulation, and it's better and better.
Just a kudos to them, that's all.
Yep, thank you.
Excellent. Good point. Should we take roll call on that?
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath.
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mark. We have the Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report. I would entertain a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Howard, before we, I just want, I talked to Matt today. November volume number's 330,000 tons. We're probably going to be trending somewhere for the year, probably 360, which is solid, a couple of special projects. He's going to have those numbers, you know, be able to share them with us and stuff. 400,000 is kind of a target number somewhere before, so we're still tracking real well.
That'll be the most we've ever done out there?
Hmm, probably. I'm trying to think where we're at.
We were in the 360 range, I thought.
Yeah, we're, you know, we've been there before, had, you know, major drops and stuff, and.
But it looks like we're using most of the gas out there now, which is about where we want to be.
Gas, and, yeah, things are.
I thought the comparison report of all the years, 2014 to 2017, was one of the best reports.
So, I, it's kind of funny, because I talked to Matt today, and you responded to that email. I couldn't find it. Matt said, I didn't know what Carl was responding to either.
I tried to explain it to him, but.
Yeah, no, and I mean, because of, no, and I just looked, because it was probably something you had in your notes, and I didn't have the attachment with it today.
Well, it was, it's in the agenda, but it has all the tonnage from all the years, and all the income and expense for all the years in the net.
Yeah.
And shows the transfers out, and I don't recall getting all of that information in a single report like that before, so I liked it.
That's what you were referencing, yeah.
Since I criticized.
Didn't put it in a graph.
Yes, since I criticized some of the reports a couple of years ago, I want to make sure that I made mention of a really good one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's see, we had a motion to accept, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. Any other environmental public works matters? None. We have information only, the park and rec financial documents. I would entertain a motion that we receive and file those.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried.
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
We have moved and supported.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell, Commissioner Tomlin.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Greitath.
Present.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here. Okay, moving on to item two, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to three, citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, moving to updates. We have no updates. Any updates from commissioners? Moving on to conceptual initiatives. We have none. And old business, we'll move on to seven A, new business, seven A Health Department
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, we've got quite a ask in front of you, and it's kind of all tied together, but it's separate issues. The first thing we're looking at is trying to make our, we have a, we created a part-time nurse practitioner position last year that's never been filled. Started out as being posted as two days a week, because we were operating our clinic one day a week, with hopes of increasing that. We haven't had any success at any successful candidates, and we've discussed this with HR, and looked at talking to the state, and where the funding lies, and looking at our Medicaid full cost reimbursement, and looking at making that position full-time, and sharing it with our teen health center, where there's some more of the revenue opportunities. We feel that we can fit this into our budget, and get our family planning up to three days a week, and get our case count up to where the state needs to see it, to continue our funding from that level. So we'd like to create that position and get that, get that posted, so we can have[1729.44] So we'd like to create that position and get that, get that posted so we can have that clinic up and running.
And if, good, want to address each position separately. The full-time nurse practitioner, it'll be an additional 41, around that 42,000. What's the total, if you know, just estimate, about 70,000?
About that.
Okay. And full-time, you said three days, but that'll be still 40 hours.
Three days in family planning clinic, two days at our teen health center. So that would make it the 37 and a half hours.
Do we have any other questions on that position? Explain the next one.
The next two kind of go hand in hand. With the hepatitis A outbreak that we've got going on, it's taken a lot of staff time, a lot of meeting time, a lot of clinic work. And we're really at the bare end of our nursing staff with, with doing these type of extra activities. So the state of Michigan finally came around, they've opened up their emergency center and treating this as an active event. We're meeting with the state weekly on this. They allocated us an additional $100,000 to provide some staffing and some resources for this hepatitis A situation. So we have a part-time nurse who's doing some education work with two other grants, and we'd like to pull that nurse out of there and utilize some of the grant money and then some of our Medicaid money to make that a full-time position. So this nurse can be dedicated to a lot more immunizations, hepatitis A projects. And we're, in general, we're always in need of public health nurses. So those education pieces that she was doing under other grants, other grants, leaves that money on the table. And we need, we've had other nurses doing piecemeal health education, marketing. Most of the grants we get anymore have at least some line items for, for marketing and advertising in order to get your services out there, get the clinics advertised. So we want to pull some of those duties away from the nurses as well as these duties from these other two grants, the safe sleep and the lead, and put that towards a full-time health educator who can handle a lot of that media stuff, social media, and advertising and marketing for not only hepatitis A, but for the entire nursing division.
I have a couple of questions. Any questions from commissioners? I talked to Carrie on this and I talked to you earlier, the hepatitis A, you told me that it's up to 23 now for 2017 instances and potentially up to 1,000 vaccinations. Will this will be able to take care of in the county?
Well, this, the, there's really, the vaccinations would be unlimited. It's going to be what, what is needed. We have four clinics scheduled in the month of January, some are targeted towards food service and, but they're all open to the community. I'm hoping we will do hundreds just in the month of January. One outbreak could mean thousands and for the next year even. So there's vaccine available right now, and if we have the staffing, we can always be up on these. And the more vaccine we get out there, the less chance it's going to be to have an outbreak that's really going to hit, hit hard. So it will, it will be well-used.
And you pretty much answered all my questions earlier. Do we have any other questions? And I have a motion to send this to the full board.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, Gray.
Thank you.